UBSutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.
What, everybody, this is the open session of UBS city unified school board meeting. I want to thank all of you for attending tonight. We will begin, there's nothing to report out from both session, but would you join us in saluting the flag, please? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, there's nothing to report out from, again, there's nothing to report out from closed session. May we begin by the student reports, please. Could you tell the audience who you are and what school you represent?
We're going to the podium tonight.
Hi, guys, my name is Eddie Jensen and I am the River Valley School Board representative. I hope you guys are all having a great day and I'm just gonna here to share a little bit about what River Valley ASB is doing for the past weeks and the weeks coming. Hi, guys.
Hi.
So River Valley has a lot of, lot of stuff in store for the kids. We're wrapping up October and beginning into November, so we're hitting some big stuff. Right now Falcon Freaks has the ping pong tournament and that's good. It's bringing out a lot of kids and, you know, encouraging more student and teacher relationships. We have the big game RD versus YC at 6:00 PM. We also have this Friday, we have the Grateful Sports Rally, which is on Friday and it's just to give recognition to false sports that have been putting in the hard work. Tomorrow, we have our final October lunch activity, which is student-teacher pumpkin decorating. So it's one student and one teacher together and they're decorating pumpkin for, you know, like a little fun competition. Friday, we have a freshman barbecue with Link Crew, so ASB and leadership itself is working with Link Crew to give freshmen kind of like a warm experience after they've been working so hard for this quarter of the year. So from 11, November 4th to November 16th, we're getting the final logistics for our canned food drive. So our special projects committee is working really hard to get everything sorted out with our publicity and making sure it gets out to the kids who would like to participate. We are finally ending our school-wide door decorating competition with a final judging this week. It's, we've given the teachers all, all month to put together a door decorating with their kids and so the winner will have special projects give them a gift just to let them know, hey, thank you for participating and we really like it, patron. Next Wednesday, we are congratulating all of our 4.0 kids for the quarter just to, you know, thank them for working hard and putting in to get all A's. I know it's definitely not easy, especially some kids coming out of COVID and whatnot, so we'd really like to do something. So we're doing some pizza and some lemonade just to, you know, let them know we're thankful for the work. And to top it all off, we are finalizing our plans for our leadership workshop. We did have a lunch with the ASB from UBS city. I am sure she'll speak on that as well, just to get all of our plans together so that way we can really give these middle schoolers a good leadership experience and what a real leadership workshop should look like. So that's really all that River Valley has in store for you guys and for your kids. Thank you, guys, for your time and have a great rest of your night.
Thank you.
I'm Isabella Avila, I am the UBS city student representative and I would like to talk about what we did in the past and what I was talking about last time. So last time I was talking about how we're having a food fair and that food fair ended up having 19 clubs set up and all of them mostly sold out. We ended up cleaning up about 30 minutes after, after lunch. And then I would like to talk about, we are having a link, there's a Link Crew's October event they're having. There's gonna be like candy things based painting developing the 28th. On the 31st, there's gonna be a student contest. There's three things that we're gonna judge on. It's gonna be scariest, most creative, and funnest. Also tomorrow, we are gonna have a college fair and all the college representatives around the area are gonna come to our school and talk about their college and also there's gonna be multiple military branches there as well. At 6:00.
Thank you.
Sorry, 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 I almost forgot about this. On the 4th of next month, we have a student versus staff basketball game.
Now it's our favorite time, staff recognition meeting.
Alright, we got it, we're on the favorite time slot. Alright, good evening to our Board of Proceeds, staff, and audience members. The Board has prioritized time on the agenda to recognize members of the district staff who have engaged in the week or extraordinary acts to educate today's students to succeed in tomorrow's world. And in so doing, personifying the YC USB mission, which states our students and staff will be lifelong learners, creative problem solvers, and responsible, ethical, and respectful contributors in a global society. The Board has prioritized this time each meeting because recognition shapes a culture of overall excellence by increasing productivity, promoting retention of top performers, and encouraging ongoing improvement. With that said, I'd like to pass the lecture to our site and department managers who are here this evening who will present tonight certificates of excellence. Well, we've got a couple managers who's, we have one shy employee and another who had it last minute. I mean, could not be here, but the managers are here to talk to you about regardless. So Chelsea, your ask, I'm just gonna pick you.
Good evening, it's my pleasure to recognize Gwen Rayburn this evening. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here. But Gwen is a cook transport with the UBS unified nutrition services department. She currently works at Riverbend Elementary and in November of this year, she'll be celebrating her 31st work anniversary with the district. So she's known for her smiling face, her dedicated service to the district, and she's great with the students. We truly appreciate her hard work and age.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Chris Renzola, principal at Albert Powell High School. It's my privilege to get to honor Baljeet Carr. Baljeet is one of our science teachers at Albert Powell High School and I don't think there's anything I can say that isn't captured by what my staff has said about Baljeet. Baljeet's worked many years at Albert Powell. She's always consistent with her teaching and the way she works one-to-one with her students. She has a master's degree in science and has worked at the college level, but chooses to dedicate her care helping our rich kids at Albert Powell. As a new teacher on campus, Ms. Carr always supported my efforts to understand the climate and how to award credits. Baljeet's always at work. I don't think she's missed a day in two years. Her smile warms my heart and her excellency in teaching inspires me to continue to strive for excellence and lifelong learning in my subject area. While she is focused solely on reaching, connecting to, and preparing her students for adulthood through the teaching of her science curriculum, she exemplifies what it means to be an excellent, passionate, knowledgeable, and dedicated teacher. And I think that encompasses Baljeet in more ways than one because she is phenomenal and we greatly appreciate her.
The Board would like to present you with the break service.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Isabella Avila, I'm looking for King Avenue. It is my pleasure to make this opportunity to recognize Albert Powell Day. She's an intervention teacher at King Avenue. For all of her hard work and dedication to both her students and families. Fresh Powell's shy, she's a shy one, so. But I wanted to be here to make sure that we could recognize her. Since I began working at King, it was immediately clear that Fresh Powell's someone who works wholeheartedly every day with purpose and intention. She has never undermined herself through job description and has always made herself available to support her support learning. She works regularly mentoring teachers, new and veteran, and offering guidance in areas of intervention and strong teaching practices. She regularly helps in SSTs and big picture data analysis. She's a data queen and I love her for it, so we can count quite often as well as anything else that is needed at King. Apart from her excellent command of understanding curriculum instruction, she also demonstrates a great part for our kids and our families with time here to recognize Fresh Powell. Thank you.
She's dying, she has to stand up. We were texting all night last night, she was like, I was like, we're gonna forget to talk. So I'm Sarah Whitcote, the president of Link Crest, this is Debbie Novell, third grade teacher, teaching for over 30 years. You wouldn't know that by looking at her lovely blonde hair and her fashion, her sense of fashion. But anyways, so I'll just read you what I wrote and maybe add a little bit while I go. Mrs. Novell goes above and beyond the call of duty to educate students into being lifelong learners. She is dedicated to connecting to her classroom community, students and families alike. There is no challenge that is too much for Debbie Novell. She is energetic and effective in her instruction and engages students in their learning all day. She spends time after school teaching enrichment classes and believes that all children can succeed. She always participates in furthering her own learning as a professional, mentors her peers, and is well-respected by all of the Link Crest school community. Any child who has her is blessed and leaves her classroom better than where they were from day one. Her passion and positivity is contagious and engaging anyone who enters into her classroom or conversation in the staff room, she's one of a kind and we're really lucky to have her. And she's just one of those people where you know if there's a kid that's tough or a situation that's challenging, I know that Mrs. Novell will turn the whole thing around for the positive and it's really amazing to have people like that on our staff, so, thank you.
She goes like mean Christmas party.
And she cooks great, pumpkin cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
She's on Sally. Yeah, Sarah said she could.
Again, on behalf of the board, we'd like to congratulate all of the employees. This district could not run without you and that's from the top to the bottom, to the bottom to the top. So in case no, no one ever told you how much we appreciate you, we do. Thank you, guys. We have one comment from the public on items not on the agenda.
Items not appearing on the agenda, noted to the public. The Brown Act specifically Government Code Section 54954.2 provides that no action or discussion shall be taken on any item unless it is adequately described in a timely posted agenda. Accordingly, though the public may comment on matters within the Board's jurisdiction that do not appear on the agenda, the Board cannot respond to such comments without warranting deliberating or initiating discussion on topics not properly before the Board. Given the prohibition set forth in the Brown Act and the risk associated with responding to public comments, the Board does not respond to community discussions or comments. The Board will respect the right of the public to express their viewpoint on matters within the Board's jurisdiction. However, comments that are inflammatory or that violate the privacy rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law. Board shall not permit any disturbance or willful or willful interruption of Board meetings.
That being said, Marcella Cashman. Welcome.
Good evening, as you mentioned, my name is Marcella Covila Cashman and I'm the mother of two young preschool-aged children and I'd just like to take this opportunity to share an initiative that I've been working on together with other parents and members of the community. We have put together a petition, which we'll check and out shortly, to start a Spanish immersion program at UBS unified school district with the goal of starting in TK kindergarten and first grade class, hopefully in the upcoming year 23, 24. I had the opportunity to speak with Assistant Superintendent Pam Arindit back in September regarding the initiative and she asked that we collect the signatures of up to 40 to 50 parents who would be interested in enrolling their children in the program before we move forward in any sort of way. While we have not yet met our signature goal, I'm confident that we will meet our petition goal soon as our petition is starting to gain traction in the community. I look forward to providing you with updates on our efforts and hope that we can work together in the near future to bring this initiative to fruition. Thank you all so much for your time and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. Reports and information, 11A. Will you record any reports? Yes. Good evening, this is our quarterly report from, beginning from July, August, and ending in September. In this time, unfortunately, we did have complaints. I'm used to being able to let the Board know and we had no complaints during this quarter. But this particular quarter, we did have two complaints. One regarding instructional materials and the other regarding teacher vacancy. At this time, we have resolved those complaints.
Could you provide some more information on?
Certainly, this was, these complaints were shared by a parent here at a board meeting earlier in September. They were in with, in regard to concerns at YCIA. Next item, staff, staff report on campus security. Thank you, so this is gonna be another tag team. And so the Board requested a report on campus security. So Justin Cess and the district office will provide some information based on what was requested. And then I have the second part and then also Mr. Bentley is here to answer some questions as well.
Alright, thank you. That made the presentation, it's not, it's back in my head. But thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to present tonight and when we started to talk about this and like what this presentation would look like, it's kind of ironic that it looks very different than what it would have in the middle of COVID or even ironically, you know, last June. Just sort of things that have happened within the world we kind of would have wrapped right now. So that being said, I think as we go through this, you'll see that we're still feeling the effects of COVID and what that looks like on safety in our campus and also the tragedy involved as well. Seeing it here on, on our campus. Alright, so tonight I want to share where we're at in terms of safety for the 22, 23 school year, kind of where we are, how we got here, kind of where we're going in response to things that are happening. And just really looking at like the infrastructures that we have in place, some of which you probably already know about, and kind of some other things that we're looking at. The people that were, that are involved in trying to keep our campuses safe, what procedures, specifically what procedures we've changed in response to some of the things that have happened over the last six, eight months. And then really looking at some of our data, specifically discipline data, what's happened so far this year and how that looks historically through, you know, from years past even pre-COVID to kind of, if you think about what was normal and then what our new normal is and how those things kind of compare. So trying to take a dive into that and then we'll kind of finish up with, with what some of our schools are doing in response to that. So we look at people, obviously, you know, it all starts with the site principal, but our assistant principals typically are the ones that oversee safety. We have a varying number of those on each of our campuses. It kind of increases as a school's size gets, gets larger. We have our two school resource officers, Eric Southward at UBS city and Rob Vains at River Valley. And obviously, they are kind of housed at those locations, but they go out to all of our sites as, as they're needed. We have our probation officers that work at different sites. We have groups that we consult with that, as you know, approve their contracts, ICS for schools and interact with our, yeah.
On probation officers, are they assigned to those schools because they have a caseload at that school?
Yes. Well, they're assigned to the site and then we provide a caseload as, as they sound.
So that, it's not that, that what it used to be, so they're just assigned based on probation? They may have students on that campus that are either they're.
Sorry, yeah.
On that probation caseload?
Yeah.
In their contract, Mr. Reed, what are we exactly paying them for?
I'm not familiar with that contract. That's always been negotiated with the business.
And the reason I'm asking is because they have no choice if they're on their caseload. I'm talking about, is that contract assigned them to work with other students throughout the district?
Yes, so typically probation at those sites, if a student, since they get dropped, they're, they're, they get caught making something, then probation works with them in terms of like making better choices to do, in an altercation or something. So it's not like typical probation, probation, which makes a different type of.
So they, they could go to Link Crest or AK or?
Sure. There's gonna need at times where we need to have a needed block to run other sites. So we just ask one of the officers to go over to the site, you know, this is the full site. So their, their, their assignment is there, but they also work throughout our entire district.
And that's written in their contract, in the agreement?
Okay, I wasn't here, but I know that's why.
Well, I'm just asking because these schools aren't the only ones that have proper schools.
Absolutely, but that's why there's, Dan is at Riverbend because there was a need last year, so he started.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the big one, obviously, is our, our campus security. So this is a graph of kind of historical campus security numbers by site. Typically, when you see an increase, obviously, there's an increase this year at Gray. There was increases at River Valley, UBS city, when the schools came back from COVID and those numbers have stayed high. They've been requesting for, for additional support based on the. Our campus security, there was a question about their experience, their experience ranges. There are 23 of them. Their experience ranges from a few months to some with 20-plus years. Overall, there's an average of about six years of experience. They all get CPR trained when they're hired. SB 390 is a training that's required by the state. All of them will be trained, was supposed to be in August, but now it'll be in February, to teach security awareness, laws and liability, conflict resolution. Sorry, not revolution, resolution. And what their role is within the school and kind of the system.
So some of them will not have had that training although they're on campus employed?
As far as I know, this is really what it would be.
Okay, no, I'm just asking, Mr. Reed.
It's true, so the, the law requiring the training is, is fairly new. Upon moving into the summer of this last year, we began working with Keenan. He was going to provide the training, had something set up in August, that fell through. I think this, the training wasn't available or something. And so we, we set the training for the earliest next date, which is February.
Are Keenan the only ones that do?
They are the, I don't know that, that's the number that we've been working with, they, they offered to us.
Because we're talking about, I'm sorry, Board, I don't want to take up too much time. We're talking about on over six months, right?
Yeah.
And the law is clear, it has to occur within one year to hire.
Tenants that work.
Correct, but they provide a lot of trainings for us on, from fourth left to campus supervisor.
You have a question?
Just have two questions.
Sure.
On this, can you explain the graph? I'm kind of confused, the numbers on the side, is that?
Numbers on the side are the number of campus security people at each of the. Numbers on the side are the number of campus security people at each of the campuses. So if you look at uh AK, they've had two, so eighteen, nineteen starts on the left, goes across to twenty-two, twenty-three.
Oh, okay, those are the years, okay, I got you.
Yes, sorry, yeah, every color is a different year.
Okay, and um, my other question was, uh, you referred to SB three ninety. Isn't there also ed code as well when it comes to the, like the requirements for campus security? Um, and they're trained in addition to that?
Yeah, I believe it's in the Q and A sheet that will happen.
Okay.
Right, but we'll talk more about NCI training too, but that's part of their, their training as well. So I'll get to that slide. Um, in terms of infrastructure, um, and again, a lot of this is, goes backwards, but all of our sites um are fenced. Uh, we talked about security for, and a lot of this comes as like a, a huge report on Uvalde and what happened there and kind of the breakdowns and all of that. The number one piece that comes out of a lot of the research is that having fences is the number one deterrent on having your campus secured so that there's one entrance during the school day. People deterrent to um active shooters and uh people that are on campus that you don't want them. Uh, all of our campuses have that, uh, we have cameras. I would say that the research says that they are a, they're a deterrent, they're a responsive tool, not necessarily competitive one. Uh, but that being said, it is something that is a deterrent to, to theft a lot of times. And so we have those on all of our campuses, um, in fact, we believe we're in the process of adding uh some at U of City currently as well, so we have some, uh, some blind spots. Uh, initially with technology, uh, we have, we are part of all three counties that use Catapult as our emergency kind of messaging system. Um, all of our sites are, are up to date with that, with their staff being connected to it so they get alerts immediately. Um, as soon as something is, is pushed out by, by any of us. So we use that, and then obviously we use Aries as our data management system, which I will show you extensively here, about four slides, um, of all the data in the pool in terms of discipline information and all that, so looking at kind of trends in terms of what's happening on our campus, uh, where it's happening, uh, who, who's doing it, all that kind of stuff.
To all employees, are all employees on Catapult?
Yes.
Or did you share anything else?
Yeah, not only just the employees, but uh people who are on our campus that are employees, we've added in as well. So if you're a county employee that's working at one of our sites, they're connected to it too. So if there is a lockdown, that'll get pushed out to, to all of them.
Teacher doesn't have their phone out, I, I'm assuming all the teachers would have their phone out or, or they have a computer on their desk, so they will see it either, either place, right?
That's correct.
That's what I thought, I, I know it's not using with device on the machine.
Yeah. And we've um, we've gone through to make sure that all of those, because especially this year, first year, maybe it's every year, right, but we had a lot of movement from one site to the other. And so we spent uh the first few weeks trying to clean up some of that. It used to be over here, now over here, and taking you off this alert, but putting you onto this one. Principals were really, principals were really good about giving us uh the information as to.
Make sure we can.
Yeah, who needs to be where, so haven't got one of those in about three weeks, so.
What do we know?
We're good on that one. Uh, we are looking at a few other things that have kind of come out and it's hard when you start to look at different vendors of, you don't want to get sixteen different systems with all different people and trying to find, number one, something that's going to be effective and going to work. Um, but also not, you know, doubling up on services and things like that. So two things that are out there that we're kind of evaluating, uh, one is uh looking at um some kind of a digital scanning system. Where people come on your campus, they present an ID, uh, your system actually runs that, that person through a database to make sure that they should be somebody you want on campus. Um, and then something, it's as much as we love Catapult, um, something you can do a little quicker of an alert. Especially if you're someone who's out on campus, uh, to be able to alert the office quickly if you see something out there versus trying to run you to a phone or if you don't have your phone, something like that. So we're looking at different things, there's nothing um that's set in stone yet, but really trying to talk to people kind of what the best um process or piece would be to, to move forward.
Catapult does a pretty good job.
Yeah. Um, the other piece that uh had webinars with the uh Department of Homeland Security. Uh, we get a chance to meet with Pete Spatafor with ICS for Schools. Um, also talking to our SROs and Sutter County sheriffs. And all of them have talked about uh their willingness to do a threat assessment at each of our sites. And so like I said, we have fences, we have all these things, but as law enforcement, they've also, they're willing to come out to each site and kind of look at going and saying, okay, where, where are our weak spots? And what, what should we potentially look at updating or upgrading or changing? Uh, they go so far to kind of look at, alright, how close is the tree to the fence? And could you climb the tree to jump over the fence, like all of that stuff? So we're going to be doing that at each of our sites. Um, we'll be pushing those recommendations to the facilities master plan uh as we go through that process too, so that'll be a piece that we go and look at.
Are you guys also possibly leaving that like keyed entrance? Like, or like the electronic entrances to classrooms and stuff?
And that, that might be something that comes through that, that recommendation. Alright, uh, an update to procedures, and again, in those conversations with everybody that's on that board, um, we also met with some county people, um, in addition to them. Um, and reading that Uvalde report, uh, three recommendations or three policies that we put in place this year. Um, one was, uh, and this has been, it's been a tough one, I'm not gonna say it isn't, but requiring that all of our doors are locked to all of our classrooms um during the school day. Asking our, our staff to have their ID badges on at all times when they're on sites. And then requiring check-in at the front office um for all uh, everybody that comes in during the school, after the school starts. And that includes um even employees as well. So those are three things that we put in place, and then in addition to that are, are additional trainings. Um, obviously we have our yearly safety drill trainings, whether that's fire evacuation, uh lockdown, shelter place, all of those things. Um, additionally, the CPI training, um, we're uh just finished certifying ten trainers. And then we have dates set uh starting in November to start training our most um kind of high impact, I guess if you will, um, starting with some of our special ed staff. Uh, as I mentioned, with the uh campus security, they'll be on that list as well to uh, to do that. And the de-escalation training, we've done that already at U of City High School. And our SROs will continue to do that training uh throughout the, the district as well.
I have a question about.
Sure.
Their training.
Yeah.
Do you guys get notification from the county when they do their CPI training? To bring all of them?
I would have to ask, uh, was that, I don't get it, but she may.
And that used to be an issue, if it's still an issue regarding uh cross-agencies training centers. And that used to be, you had heavier trainers, they couldn't train, county couldn't train us, so we couldn't, you know, you have to exchange them.
Well, at the last PD, uh, I had to get my CPR training redone. And there were people from charters, Level Unified, so.
What, what was the trainer for CPI or was it from the county office? To me, they, they didn't do that, so I'm like, no, great.
Yeah.
Just to add more games.
Yeah, we helped out a lot because it's the hardest part.
Discipline information, things that I can't even slide reminded me. I don't know where they'll be with their ballot measure in a month, but I, a couple of weeks. Sutter County's response time is extremely bad right now. Because, I mean, they only have three dispatchers for the entire department, so three people for three hundred and sixty hours a week. So I just wanted to, also, I don't know, that is something that's been considered in planning at all, but I would encourage um, that we not be too dependent on anyone, like agency, since we do have schools that are covered by.
So you mean, you mean sheriff's partner?
Yeah.
Yes, our two schools would be AK and River Valley Sheriff's, yeah. And Berry.
Yes, and it would be Lincrest, because Lincrest is not city limits.
There's more, thank you.
I will say in our conversations, um, if there was something where you needed somebody quick, it won't just be one agency that's kind of, they'll, they'll all be there. It's kind of that caliber effect that, when you kind of get that feel that you talk to them, they, even if it happens within the city limits, kind of you'd be here too, so. So this is, I'm a little bit of a nerd with this, so I apologize if I, I get too much like that, forgive me, but um, uh, about two hundred and twenty reports in areas of the fold in the last three days to put this together. But really trying to look at month to month, what does discipline look like? Um, and kind of what does it look like in a typical year, you'd say a pre-COVID typical year? And then what does it look like last year and what are we seeing so far this year? Um, the graph you see on the right there is kind of what a typical year looks like in terms of discipline incidents. So you typically have a spike in October. Um, and this is suspendable incidents, not just um teacher talking to student or whatever. You have a spike in October for the fall semester, and then you typically have two in spring, that being March and May. Um, and there's a little bit of a dip in April, but it's definitely not a low level, it's uh, uh, but it is kind of that dip. And obviously June, we're usually in school for three or four days, so we're not a whole lot of. Um, so we go to the next one, we'll look at, uh, this is elementary. And the blue line on the bottom is kind of your, kind of a pre-COVID average, that would be uh sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen and eighteen, nineteen. So incidents by month kind of averaged together. Um, and then the red line would be what we saw last year. And then the yellow line is what we see this year, and obviously October's not finished. And so it's a little bit lower of a number than we'll see with, with one, uh, kind of one more week. But it's interesting in that, and we'll talk about the September piece a little bit, that we had a spike this year in September, which we don't normally see. Um, and if you go to the next one, which is the secondary, you see the same thing with that September spike. Um, and again, twenty-twenty-two is, follows similar, a similar pattern, but you see kind of uh September and October really high. But if we focus on this year, it's that September piece where it's a hundred more incidents um in this September than it was even last year, pretty much like almost two hundred less than what it took a few years. So I think what's important about this, and we'll go to the next one, is that, that September spike, to me, a lot of things we've heard from teachers is like, this year has been really tough. And I think the data validates that and that it has. Um, the data validates, so we had a conversation today about TK and K. Um, even in most elementary, like physical aggression in younger grades has been, there's been a spike in. Um, and the data validates that too. Um, secondary, physical aggression uh is typically your highest um discipline incident. Um, and that's, that's pretty consistent. The one that has changed, um, say pre-COVID to, to now, has been the uh technology piece. And we'll talk about that a little bit, uh, for both middle school and obviously one for high schools. Uh, so I think that, I, I don't want to discount that and say that, hey, October's been great and things are going back to normal. But I think it's important to recognize, like, the numbers are going down, but the, the ones that are still there are, are the things that our, our teachers are talking about and reporting in, and our principals for that matter, and are actively working to try to, try to um, to make better. So when we talk to elementary teach uh schools, and I talked to two today, kind of like, how are we attacking this? Um, the, the physical aggression piece, and so one of the, we had a lot of different things, and I'll, I'll share them in two slides here, but the restorative conference was one that came up. Um, really getting kids to talk things out and empowering students to advocate for themselves, like, they don't like to be hit. It seems kind of obvious, but it's just being able to verbalize that to uh the people that are doing it has, has shown some improvement there. Um, utilizing the social worker and the, the wellness centers uh to curtail students who were kind of the high flyers and partnering them with, with other students to talk about appropriate behavior with lunchtime groups has shown improvement. Um, at King, we have a character strong, uh, that curriculum where they've done lessons every Friday on different character traits. Um, and it, that's kind of led itself to like an art project for students to express themselves. And then a lot of the schools are utilizing this Kelso's Choices. Uh, you see that graphic on the right, uh, trying to get students to make better choices when they're frustrated or about to make a poor decision. And they've done training with, camps have done training with yard duty, with teachers. Uh, it's been pretty extensive and it's shown, uh, it's shown some improvement there. Go to the next one. Um, other piece has been uh behavior books. Uh, there's a high school guy, this is a really exciting to read, Hands Are Not For Hitting, Computer Not For Kicking. Uh, and uh they've had counselors read the books, uh, two classes, administrators have followed up and read the books to the classes. They really had discussions within uh each of those uh groups to talk about like what appropriate behavior is. Um, they've done some things like reworking the schedule, so there's fewer students out at recess during lunch. So there's less, you know, people out there to run into and have conflict with. Um, and it's shown some gains, uh, the incidents are down from the first six weeks of school. And again, it's not to say that they've gone away, because they have not. Um, there's still more, still a lot more work to do, um, and a lot more things that uh we'll be trying to do and attempting to help with, so.
I apologize for interrupting this question. Do we still have the folks that were coming out today, do we have any, for example, like, are those, are we still there?
We assess to, right, we assess time, yes.
Alright, go to uh middle school, and I'm just, just to be specific to Gray, just because Ken and I had this conversation um today, and he's shown, he's got a lot of improvement from one year to the next, he's doing some great things. Um, when I asked him, like, what's your number one thing, he said, really, it's social media and the conflict that comes from the conversations with the social media. Um, and so he's, he's done a lot of work prior to this year and really working with his staff. And I will say this, like, the number one thing that will reduce um discipline incidents, and research validates this over and over again, is students that have a, a positive relationship with adults on campus and students who have a connection to the campus and want to be there. So if they respect the adults and they respect the places they're going to, they want to be there, they tend to do less dumb things. So really working with his staff to build relationships um with students. Um, set some very high behavior expectations, what those are, what they look like. Um, and really empowering his staff to, to assume positive intent of students and trust them. Uh, he gave a really good example last year, they never even wear um costumes for Halloween prior to last year, really saying, hey, we're going to trust you to do the right thing, this is what you should do. You know, and they didn't have any issues last, last year, now again. They say that, you know, a week away from Halloween. Really where phone calls look like on Monday. But um, the other part of it is just structural, uh, they've reworked their schedules. So instead of having um, you know, intermixed grade levels of lunch, sixth, seventh and eighth grade all have their own lunch this year um to reduce some, some of the behaviors. They have an intervention period, uh, which gives them a chance, it gives students a chance to, you know, get caught up on work and get extra help on work, but it also gives them a chance to, if they see a problem, um, like the social media piece, they've got lessons that are, are planned for this week um around that, that they use the intervention period for. Um, and then they have their Monday expectations where uh they kind of, again, set the expectation for the week. Anything that was an issue the week before, they can talk directly to people. Um, and again, they, they've shown a lot of improvement. Um, and yeah, continuing those lessons is what they'll do moving forward. Um, working with the Community Impact Center, they'll be starting next week, and that's really targeting some of their most at-risk students who don't have connections and bringing in a group that will try to build those connections with them, so that will start. I'll go to high school. Uh, River Valley, that kind of goes without saying, right now we have some social media issues there. Um, again, this is fairly, fairly new, so there's not a whole lot of, hey, we've done this, this and this. Uh, but it was, they were, are going through the loss process, they did add a goal for positive school behaviors. And so part of that will be addressing appropriate phone use and appropriate language on campus. Um, there's a lot of education that needs to happen still, I think everybody recognizes that. Uh, so it's kind of shortened this, but it's, there's more to come, but uh, obviously, it's an area of growth that we'll be, we'll be addressing in these weeks and months. Uh, over at YC, um, this year started uh rough with them in terms of physical aggression. Um, a couple of groups on campus that didn't like each other very much. Um, and it's a lot of, a lot of really good work that's happened in the last four to six weeks there. Um, big piece uh that they've implemented is really trying to begin the same thing, coming back to building connections, the staff to students, um, right now they've, he's, uh, site's got six to seven teachers that are, have uh agreed to do a check-in and check-out of students. So they've got sixty students right now that either with an administrator or with a teacher. They check in in the morning, they check out after school, that's about a lot to kind of curb some of the behaviors. Um, their goal is to get up to a hundred and fifty, so they're going to keep working on that. I mentioned they did the de-escalation training with uh Officer Southward. Um, they've done some social emotional learning awareness, uh, stuff within staff meetings. And then a big part of it is just looking at correct placement. So we've got a lot of students who by the time they get their junior, they're just, they're not able credit-wise, they're just not going to be able to graduate. And so again, coming back to that connection, I don't really have a connection to a school, but I know I'm just kind of there. And there's really no hope of me being able to do anything else. And so trying to find, working with counselors to find options like, if you go to Penn Study or if you go to Powell, or you set up, you pass the high set or something like that, can give you a place where you can have some success, because what is happening right now clearly isn't a good place for. And give you the place where you can have some success, because what is happening right now clearly isn't a good place for that. So they've done a lot of work there. And if you look at their numbers, um, in the last six weeks, they're down thirty-five percent in terms of, uh, physical aggression. So mutual combat, fighting, all of those, those goes. So they've done a lot of good work. And again, they're also working with the Community Impact Center, they had a rally last Friday, they're starting to put that group together, kind of their tier-three, like, uh, just really at-risk students to try to kind of build some relationships to see if we can make some, some positive influence there.
I'm sorry, this is Community Impact Center.
So we proved that, I think, uh, about a month ago, so it's a group, um, basically, they, they come in and they, they have a, you target students that are, that are high-risk. Uh, who typically have a hard time building positive relationships on campus. So it's a curriculum based on, you know, building positive relationships, but it's also a chance for them to kind of talk through some of the issues that, um, they're facing. Uh, on a day-to-day basis, and, and really kind of a safe place that's not a, uh, staff member or administrator, uh, but somebody that they feel comfortable.
Where is it, where is it now?
Well, it happens onsite.
Onsite, so, I mean, I was just wondering, because it said center, so I didn't know.
Oh, no, they have a, they have a center, um, in Sacramento, but they come to the school.
Oh, they come to our school and do it, okay.
Yes, yeah, so they come once a week, uh, to meet. That's all we got.
Questions for?
The, the placement issue to me seems like a real key, as well as, you know, I remember when I was classroom teacher, wishing that there was some way I could jam their cell phones during class. So that they wouldn't work. You know, I mean, that mine needed to work for catapult or whatever, but there, there needs to be some way, you know, because, uh, they are so addicted.
And, and I would say that phone addiction is probably, when you get down to the root cause, is probably one of the worst pieces that we're facing. Because they are, they can't put it down. And I know there's teachers who use, we used to call them like phone jails, for their little plastic pockets and all that, put the phone away. And that shows a lot of, I mean, obviously, your attention is a lot better when you're not kind of looking at your desk or where else.
Would you say that that, uh, some of those problems are caused by parents who insist that they have their phones at school?
Yeah.
Or call their friends during class?
Go for that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, I mean, it's, it's a difficult thing to force, because parents will call and say, they need to have their phone so they can get in touch with me, and.
Yeah.
Like I think what Shelley's referred, or what you referred to, that's one of those things where there is a way to, the students enter their pouches into a way that they don't, they don't get access to. Teacher still has access to your, for internet. But that is one of the things that will, we will like to talk before we use the district, sort of, you do your cell phone policies that are, that are restrictive. Because the fact that social media has become such an issue, that they can have their phones, because they can have it, that's my law, but you really do restrict where they are. And it also becomes a bit of a battle, maybe a battle of more students in our campus.
We, we did a study at the state level about, uh, looking at the threat, and most of them were communicated by cell phones. Student to student informing other students of their plans, and it was all on social media. And the legislature is looking at that.
Just, just for example, I mean, and I'm talking about a couple of years ago, that once the fences went up, you know, a kid comes to school later. They text their friend who's in class, and they go to the bathroom and open the gate for the kids to come through, so that they can get it back on campus. I mean, it, it, plus, or, you know, there's going to be a fight at this place on campus at this time, and everybody shows up with their cell phones, so they can video it, put it on TikTok. I mean, the phones are just, you know, then you talk about not just discipline, but cheating, you know, that happens because of cell phones. I mean, every aspect of education is impacted right now by kids and their cell phones. And even including little kids who don't have imaginations anymore, because it's all good and good. So, I need to just jam.
So, and what I do is a golden sheet, so these were questions that were sent, uh, in addition to what yesterday was asked to cover. Some of it is, some of it is, uh, predispended. I did want to call out the dates for the special intervention institute, their CPI training that will start their special education staff. Those are the dates that were selected, and I am working with President Riley, the governor, to, to, you know, to also, to the district to do de-escalation training. And then, uh, the CPI trainers will also offer passport trainings to our teachers and classified staff, um, on the de-escalation, um, strategies. Uh, our thought would be is that we would provide some in-person, but they also would be videotaped it, so that the teachers would have access to classified staff, would have access virtually as well to see those. The other, uh, is. How is the district supporting the strategy of bringing staff, classified staff in terms of, so it wasn't reported, so I want to read it to you, but it's all there. And then input, having, and just in terms of giving principals, assistant principals, interviewing our staff. I think we have seen a decrease in, um, discipline issues, but I just met with a group of, our large group of our TK and K teachers. We are seeing students who are struggling, um, how to be students, and so there is, you know, they're, they've got a class of twenty to four or more, and they're trying to teach. But one or two students who are having some challenging behaviors are, are causing some, um, challenges in the classroom. So there's an opportunity, I met with principal staff, and I met with principals first, and then we met with this group. And then we'll have a subcommittee to help bring some ideas regarding how do we address this. And so, and Deena was there, so, um, to help and some of their Y C T members. Because it is, it is, they are, we, we are seeing some of the, um, I believe, the impacts of the, of the pandemic, especially with our youngest learners, because they've been so isolated. So just, but again, one or two is in a classroom. And I was in a meeting with the county superintendents today, and everyone is seeing this on their campuses, so, uh, we're seeing it. Again, they're littleish owners up to our, our, our older students. So there's a lot of layers here that we're trying to align, and I think the sites have done a nice job, and again, we're showing a decrease in some of the aggressive behaviors. But they're not completely gone, and we need to, to recognize that, and what do we do next? The types of incidents was addressed in the presentation. Um, there was a question about board policy and notification regarding incidents, there isn't a board policy administrative right. But it is in your government handbook, and there's a final notification to you, and the conditions by which I would notify you, uh, uh, in a list of what you kind of reach to in your government handbook. And so that's there. And then, um, education code in regards to your security guard, um, and I believe it's Edgar three zero zero one five, Jasmine's, you know, hopefully referencing, or sorts of different. And then, um.
That code section doesn't necessarily define what that training is, it's, it's done by post. And if they're armed, they have to attend the eight thirty-two training, if they're armed.
I don't know that, uh, the A V three ninety or Southwest would be directly related to, uh, school-based campus security, frankly.
Correct.
And, um, I know there's some questions about around that, and, uh, Rob Pope has done some research about additional trainers other than Deena. So I, I think we, we'll need to get some information about what he also found, uh, providing additional trainers.
Well, and the training, if, that only pertains to our employees, if we have an outside agency that's responsible for their own training. Um, and again, if they're armed, and I, you know, probation officers, some of them are, I'm not sure if they are on our campuses, but they have to attend eight thirty-two, uh, awareness, as well as the use of a firearm. So my guys will bring that, Jasmine.
Uh, going back to the board policy, I'm going to go to my instances. I guess I, I don't know if I was one of the ones that, uh, if I was the one that asked this, or a lot of people had asked too. You know, there, there have been some pretty serious, uh, incidences involving student employees, um, that's happened at our high school, high schools, maybe most of them. And I think my, my thoughts and my feelings towards this is that when it comes to the safety of personnel or student, um, I, I feel like we should know. Because I, I personally feel like there's some board members that give that information, or we hear it from outside community members. And I feel like, whether or not there's disciplinary action, whatnot, I understand, like, the rules behind what we can know, what we can't know. But I feel like we should be notified from the district when there is hands-on with either student or staff members.
So when you say hands-on, so that's, that's, and I would like, um, whenever we, and we, we will have a governance training, and the handbook will be one of those. Is clarification regarding serious safety concerns or hands-on, so, you know, students, um, will get into fights, and so that's a hands-on, so.
When, when I, I, when I view that, I'm thinking if there's something between a student and a staff member.
Oh, no, okay.
I, uh, we were notified of an adult that came onto a student's upper high school, and there was, uh, a fight that ensued between a student and an adult that came on. Uh, I felt like, just in the same manner that we were notified about that, we should have been notified of like a couple more that have happened.
So I think that that will be a big conversation with, uh, Steve Dory, January regarding this, you know, serious disciplinary action. Can I just, I, and I'm hoping that, um, I don't want to innovate you, but I innovate you today, keeping you aware of the, um, situations on campuses. So that will be helpful in terms of my notification to you regarding, and just the clarification of that is.
Aren't you notifying all board members at the same time? I, I'm not sure what I meant by, Jasmine, or do you think that some board members are getting information?
No, I, what I mean by that is like, maybe a community member or a staff member might reach out to any one of us individually. And you hear about it, and, and I feel like all of us should be on the same, all of us should be on the same page as far as what information we know. But pertaining to some recent ones, uh, I mean, I was notified today of an incident that happened within the last couple of school days. And so.
With staff and students.
Mm-hmm. And so it's, it's hard for me to be, uh, able to, like, not act shocked when I hear something, and I'm like, really? And I feel like I should be able to say, you know, hey, uh, I wasn't aware of that, or I wasn't aware of that, like, you know, blanket statement.
Right.
Instead of being blindsided.
Yeah, and, and I don't ever want you to feel blindsided, and there are times where I, I can't. With these certain pieces of information, like certain, the certification during the January, every training, we, we, we can talk about that in terms of what, you know, what I can.
What we just.
And then also, I understand, I think I understand what you're asking for, and in some circumstances, and that is the unfortunate thing, is, you know, sometimes social media.
Well, yeah, but I, sorry, I would, let me just finish this last case and just. But for me, I feel like a simple email of, hey, uh, there was, there was a call, or however you want to describe it, invite between, or hands-on between a student and staff member. Or a staff member and whoever, whatever. It could be as direct as that without giving any other details, and then just like, are you, normally you all like, I'll share more information when, when I can. But at least having that.
Something happens.
Something happened, you know? That's kind of my two cents on that.
I show.
I was just gonna, and I tried to interrupt, and I'm sorry I tried to interrupt, but I was just gonna say the same thing, it's like, we don't need details, we just need to know so that.
Something happened.
You're standing in line at the grocery store, and somebody says, hey, what's going on at, you know, X school, and you're like, oh, what's going on? And then they know it, and you're like, wow.
But then what if she's emailed you again?
Well, just, you know, there was an incident, and just so you're not, like, you're not shocked. But my question that I wanted to ask, um, goes to these dates here.
Yes.
Are these for all staff?
No, so we're going to start with special education, it's about this, or specifically for special education staff, it's a little bit higher level of training for regarding CPI training, so it's the special education staff. And I believe she said campus supervisors, um, it, and, and that's right.
But if we have, okay, so at one of our schools, we have taken over the emotionally disturbed program from the county. And we have students that are in genetic population, so why would we limit it to just specialized teachers?
So the, the, the level of training, so we are going to do the de-escalation training. Uh, some of this will be actually, um, the ability to contain students, which would really is, is a link to your training. So we are going to do the de-escalation component. I think that if we're going to do CPI training for all staff members that have a county upper-year program or a district S D C, it's going to require more, because it's a two-day, full-day training. So there's more to it, so that's the direction that we're going to go in, it's going to take some planning, because we couldn't possibly do CPI training the way it's intended, on every campus of every staff member at this point in time.
My thing.
It's just, I know that we recently, the teachers recently had a PD day. I don't think that, um, I don't think that a lot of this was what was addressed, I think it was more of the same stuff that they've done in PDs for years instead, so.
I think the special, like, de-escalation training.
They, they would, I think, I, from, the teachers who reached out to me, they would really like that more of this, instead of more P L C, look at data.
Well, so that's why we're going to go out and do the passport training, and to do some virtual webinar training, so that it's available somewhere. But you also, I want to caution everyone in terms of CPI training, the full CPI training, talks about containment, I don't know that we want everyone to be, it's really about the de-escalation. It's a first phase, that you really want to make sure that you're, um, working to de-escalate, you're not putting yourself in a situation where kids are escalating, or when they are escalating, you're, you're, you know.
Well, even some preventative before we get to the main de-escalation is more of how to engage.
So that's kind of a component that we're going to do through the passport model, not the full CPI.
So people will have to work, I, I'm just sad that we missed the PD opportunity when teachers were already there.
And, and again, we can look to the future to do that, so I think, I believe my next is March. Right, so that's why, for me, that seems laser clear.
A long time away.
Right, so we're trying to get it out, and then offer it in a variety of ways.
Now, the questions are, just a minute, Dea, Dea.
Who, who's responsible, like, not responsible, but is there, is there a policy in place as far as who must be CPI trained?
I don't know, that's, that's a district discretion in terms of affirmative CPI training, definitely you would want your staff who are, you know, who interact on a day-to-day basis, who are more intense students.
Uh-huh.
Because it's, I mean, you know, you're CPI, you're CPI trained.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and so.
And a recertification happens every two years.
Correct. And so we just had our trainers recertified, so that's why.
It's not just the trainers being recertified, it's your, what is your, your.
Right, so I shared, we, um, I gave a list of those who were certified, so are, already before we left, we had that, that, that dated, and everyone had been certified. So we had gone through that process last full year, but we have to go back through that list and find out who else needs to be recertified.
So maybe you and I can talk a little bit about that. And then, we should, yes. Oh, I have one, one last question about types of incidences. I know it says that it would have been addressed in the presentation, but I think that Mr. Cutts has had talked about, um, being like suspendable offenses. Nice graphics, by the way, I really love those back there, it's a bit of like that. I, I guess I just kind of want to get a, a little bit better understanding of like, what is the scope of instances that we're having at schools, right? So like, I'm thinking about safety, um, a school that has, um, high level of narcotics being brought on campus or something like that. That's the safety concern, that maybe the, I would have a different set of questions, maybe we would be looking at a different type of response. But, you know, that, the peak that we were seeing in September with the high schools, what type of incident is happening, happening with the most frequency, I guess?
So physical aggression is the, is the number one for the high schools. And then technology violations would be probably number two. And then probably third would be substance, so drugs, maybe things like that. And then within those, and it's difficult, because when you, when you put them in there, sometimes you, it's multiple for the same thing. So like defiance, disrespect, like those things, kind of sometimes they'll go with, like a fight, so they, you're kind of a combo, I guess. And sometimes they can kind of be a catch-all for what else is happening.
Do you have any, um, ideas as far as like, what's the worst offense that we have been on?
Physical aggression is, for the high schools is the worst. So mutual combat, fighting, that's, that's the worst.
Are we, do we have a problem with weapons, too?
I'd say we don't, but that hasn't been.
High frequency?
No.
Thank you.
Are they, is, has there been a conversation with law enforcement as to when they would be called? Because there've been some incidents that have happened on camp, campuses that are reportable offenses.
Yeah, typically, they're, yeah, they're there, and so, and if they're not, then I, usually, they call me, I tell, I typically tell them to call.
See, that is something I, I want to clarify, and I guess we need to, we need to talk about. See, that is something I, I want to clarify, and I guess we need to, we need to talk about law enforcement. So we are reporting this to our S R Os, and so the question that was raised to me is, why are we not filing, filing a report? And so I need clarification from law enforcement regarding.
What do they mean filing a report?
Why, that's what I keep getting asked about is filing a report. So the law, the law state of notification to our S R O's, and I'm also working legal on this, or notifying law enforcement. So we notify law enforcement, and what happens next, I think, is, you know, I see the question that's coming up.
It, it, it appears that they're using their discretion to file a citation or not. If they don't file a citation, it goes nowhere. If they file a citation, that juvenile has to appear at the probation department for a response to the citation. That could be informal probation for six months. If it's serious enough, it could be a detention hearing, held in court. But it's very clear on, on which offenses are reportable. And if our process is to report them to the S R O's, a school resource officers, and some of them here have attended classes at my, my academy, um, they, they are the ones who issue the citation, no citation, no action.
Well, and I think that that is the, the, the conversation that I'm going to be having with both sheriff and P D. Because I think there is a disclaimer out there that very often that we've not met our due diligence by contact and law enforcement, we haven't that. And there's been no report filed or no, no citation issued. And so we've done, we have done the notification, and very often a citation has not been issued, or a report has not been filed.
If their call, if, if you have an incident, it's just a question, if you have an incident at a campus and you, school resource officer gets involved, then what happens? I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but we need to have an understanding of, is it going anywhere?
Yeah, and I, to be honest with you, I don't know. Like, I know we've got a couple this year where I've said you need to let them know, and so I've seen incidents before, so. But we haven't, but I haven't seen what happened.
You haven't seen a citation?
So we're gonna ask some clarified questions, because I think that's the question that is continuing coming up regarding that expectation of, of whether it's a report filed or a citation, because we are notifying law enforcement, we've notified, you know, and so that is one of the things that I think is a question that continues to come up, and we can talk with law enforcement regarding.
Yeah, it, it goes to Jasmine's question of the seriousness of the offense. That's their determination. Um, if probation doesn't get a citation, which says, appear at the probation department at this time, at this hour, then there's no involvement by them.
It's the, like, so I think about what you guys are saying, like, kind of like a CPS report, right? It's an actual CPS form that you must fill out with all the documentation, is that kind of what you guys fill out? Like, I don't know if there's even something like that.
We report what happens, I, they knew their.
They, they should be, they should be developing a fine report, a C R, um, in order to get, but if they don't think it's serious enough, nothing happens.
Well, is our S R O considered?
Yes.
So that's who we reported to, and then they should be following.
Well, we should have some information as to what happened as a result of calling them. I don't know, you guys probably know better, if, if a student is involved in an altercation and they're called in, are they reporting to you what they did with that student?
And we'd, I'd have to ask a site, site, because I, I, I know that when I ask, when I've ever asked, they, they'll give you a, a report number or a report.
A primary report, a C R. Well, in that C R, it should tell you what action was taken.
And I have to review.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just saying that, that is what should happen, and probation then, you know, it just sounds like we need more communication between the players that be, you know, if they're on our campus and, and they are our law enforcement representatives, we should have a better understanding of what happens, but.
Well, I think the question I have is, and I think you just stated it, is that when we report to law enforcement, whether it's our S R O's or we call P D and our sheriffs in, um, to report something, they investigate, and they make the decision whether or not there's a.
Every time a law enforcement officer responds, it's a call for service. You have to document why you went there and what happened. It's not optional. When you call nine-one-one, it's a call for service, when the school calls, then it's a call for service. And there has to be a report that says what happened as a result of that. So if it's not happening, use the way of.
I think the question is, what if they don't call, what if they go knock on the office door? I think sometimes those are, I think that.
And that's very often, probably that's happening because of that third house or.
So I think it goes back to, I, I'm, I'm thankful, Jenny. How do we establish the level of severity? I mean, when does a knock on the door, a knock, I mean, and I, I understand what you're saying.
Like, there's sort of a trail of something.
Yeah.
Well, even when it's a knock on the door, maybe that's the, hey, I need you here right now, it's an immediate need, but then there needs to be.
We don't have a big.
There still needs to be a report on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let us get some clarification, we'll bring it back to the board, because there are some questions. Thank you.
I will help you misunderstand.
Sure.
Dana?
Thank you, um, oh, sorry.
Before, before you speak, Dana, sorry, can I read the statement?
Yes.
Have to, sorry. Sorry, hold your thought. Um, items posted on the agenda, under the brown, asks that the board shall undertake comments on any items appearing on the posted agenda. As the board discusses agenda items, uh, audience participation is permitted. Generally, the president will ask board members for their remarks before recognizing requests to speak from the audience. At the, at the president's discretion, an agenda item may be considered in other than numerical order. The board will respect the right of the public to express their viewpoints on matters within the board's jurisdiction. However, comments that are discriminatory or that violate the privacy rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law. The board shall not permit any disturbance or vocal interruptions of orders.
Thank you, Lord, we're seeing how the president of the State Teachers Association. Um, I appreciate this, um, recent attention to E D G O four, four, zero, one, four. Whenever an employee of school district or, um, office of county superintendent of schools is attacked, assaulted, or physically threatened by any student, it shall be the duty of the employee and the duty of any person under this direction or supervision. The employee is, um, employed in the public school system who has knowledge of the incident to promptly report the incident to appropriate law enforcement authorities. Therefore, you're to make a report to be an infraction punishable by a fine of not more than one thousand dollars. I appreciate knowing that the district, um, is making those reports to S R O's. However, we need more documentation of that. We need the person who was assaulted to be able to get a follow-up to know that a report was filed. Um, I do know in recent cases where we pushed for it, um, that law enforcement did interview those, um, the most, two most recent, well, the prior two cases, um, that law enforcement did interview those employees. We have another case at R V last Friday, and it's our standard, law enforcement will be interviewing that person, um, tomorrow. Um, assault sign school person alerted really serious matter. And it's our standard that there was one today on a person not represented by Y C T, and thus, it is our concern that staff, um, a couple of other items to address. We do appreciate R V's, um, zero tolerance policy for cell phones now. Um, it is critical to our students' safety with regards to their, um, illegal videotaping of others, but also, um, just for their attention. So we appreciate the new focus on cell phones, appreciate the district's interest in, um, really looking at how cell phones impact the education of our students. I'd like to address documentation. I do think it is critical that we have some conversations about what gets documented in areas. Yesterday at rev council, I had a teacher, uh, report that they were told by admin that they were going to pick and choose what goes into areas is. Um, that concern you a little. We had T K K teachers today talking about their assault, when not always documented. T K teachers and K teachers with bruised chins being kicked by students. Our job is really tough, and it's always been tough, but, you know, these things are making it way more difficult. A couple of other items to, um, address. We need to really look at that de-escalation training. Um, if we need to assure the staff that it is an effective, um, training that really gives us clear and consistent parameters for how to deal with student aggressive behaviors, um, when to intervene, how to intervene, when to intervene in student fights. In both those last two cases, it was staff members who intervened, um, after assaults. Um, yeah, after assaults. Um, so what do you want us to do? Should we try and get away and not intervene? And then finally, with regards to, uh, fences, um, brought this up before, I look forward to, um, some timely action with regards to fences. I'll give you two different scenarios. King Avenue, uh, teachers visited Linkcrest for, uh, training on a, a very great book, and they're like, Linkcrest, you gotta get buzzed in, you know, the, the front office personnel are safe from parents, and they felt much safer on Linkcrest campus. On King Avenue, you get to walk through that door and they're in. And that leaves your front office personnel a little, uh, more at risk again. Not represented by Y C T, but Y C T members were, um, impressed by the level of, um, security at Linkcrest. Um, and then finally, the defenses of Y C H S. Um, number pretty alluded to, uh, students used to have cell phones to get somebody else to open the gate for you, for a student. I mentioned that at this last board meeting. Um, P D is a very serious concern. Having our classroom doors locked doesn't protect us if kids can get in the gate. Um, and they, they're going in and out of that gate at Park Avenue on a regular basis. We need effective gates. Um, and we, um, brought forth a proposal to, um, Principal Holstein, who I understand brought it forth, um, to the district office. And we hope that the district will be moving forward to change the fencing perimeters at Y C H S. There is a way to protect our kids, to allow them to evacuate in the event of an emergency requiring evacuation, while also allowing us to have the gates locked. At R V, during instructional time, the only way in is through that front office door, it's all locked up tight. Um, at Y C, you can get in those push gates because somebody has let you in. So we do hope that you'll, um, look at fencing at Y C H S. Uh, I really appreciate your focus on our safety. Um, we, we can educate kids if they're not safe. It's also tough to educate, we can't engage them, and that's part of why this, um, cell phone. So I thank you, um, for looking at, um, probably to protect the safety of staff and students.
Um, just for the board's knowledge, some of the training that, um, the de-escalation training is, is not only going to show or instruct how to de-escalate a situation, but at what point it's hands-on necessary. Um, many of the teachers that, that we deal with Sacramento and South want to know, will I be supported if hands-on becomes necessary? And of course, they want to know what's the liability, uh, qualified immunity, what, what is, am I covered if I put hands-on? The training that, the individual that's going to come and do part of the training is, uh, Gray Simmons. He's the superintendent of juvenile hall in Yolo County, and, uh, understands kids at their worst. And then we, you, you will have with him a therapist who does the de-escalation. But the problem is that if teachers, I, I don't care how much we train them, if they feel there's a liability, if they put hands-on, there's a liability, if they do certain things. So we have to be clear as to what action the board is going to support, because they, they're not going to want to step out there if they think they're risking their jobs. Anyone else have questions?
I just have one last comment.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, any question, I guess, it's like, where are we gonna go here? Um, I am really glad that we, you know, got, um, input from different, a variety of different, um, staff, principals, staff, sure that included C O C, C T too. Um, but, you know, I feel like there also needs to be a component of like, are we asking our students what makes them feel safe or not safe as well? I think there's, to get a clear picture of like, what are the needs amongst all stakeholders, right?
That is part of the surveys we do, so there's a pass survey, and then there's the, um, they did survey that the students are asked those kind of questions. So there will be information, uh, as those surveys are being done. So pass is being done now, and then count, count from how the kids will be done in spring.
It's usually everywhere. Yeah, but I think the last time we got that, we didn't really get that much, uh, as far as, um, students on waiting room, I don't know. We can't force them to hopefully, I don't know, but.
So it is a survey.
Yeah, but I think we had talked, or somebody had thought up, like, possibly even during the class period or.
That's what they're doing, my past.
Okay.
I think the other thing is, not all of our students are that bad. You know, and I think there's a public out there that thinks maybe the behavior of a few speaks to it. I have two nephews that go to R V, and he said, Nana, we're just afraid to speak up. Um, and they were greatly affected by, uh, the viral video, um, because there's been an accelerated use of the N-word. And, and when I told them to go to the teacher, they said, well, teacher said come to her when they use that word. Fortunately, well, they don't, don't walk up in the whole class and say that. So it, it's, it's had a lot of effects. We also have a, have a, I believe, a cultural problem. What students understand is appropriate, not appropriate, which is why a lot of them thought it was bad. Any other comments? The next item is school enrollment report.
Yes, tonight we have the quarterly enrollment report. And we currently have eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-six students. Um, that is three hundred and seventy-nine less than what we had at this time last year. We are slowly creeping up, but at this point, we are still in declining enrollment.
Questions?
So when we look at declining enrollment, is that just in comparison to the year before?
Um, for purposes of this, um, yes, but no, we look over time and we've looked, we used to be up close to thirteen thousand a few years ago. Um, probably four or five years ago, we're about twelve thousand five hundred. So we, we are definitely in declining enrollment. Sir Shinwell did a couple of presentations about how that was impacting our. We were in declining enrollment.
I know, but that works after.
What do you think the reasoning is?
Um, I don't really know. California, um, has lost students in K twelve education across the board, everybody's down. Um, during COVID, there was a bit of an exodus, so, um, but I don't have any specific information about why or. Colorado to the boarding school. Because they were open at time, now he likes it, so he's not coming. So, you know, but, I mean, it seems extreme to me, but that's kind of where I see it, charter schools, private schools.
Any other questions for Dan? Consent agenda, is there any item that any board member wishes taken separately?
I was gonna say four twelve A's, it's just a contract.
Okay.
Can I just say a comment?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for, I had to straighten up. Superintendent, so me on the A, um, the flyer that we have, we obtained, and I appreciate you posting that, thank you.
Okay, so we're pulling twelve A, we need a motion on twelve B, to, uh, twelve B through, um, twelve K.
I remember that they approved twelve B through twelve A on the consent.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed, member Tackard is not in attendance. Twelve A, please.
Thank you, I'd like to call attention just to the contractors within the agenda regarding the work that we are going to be doing with more training and associates. Um, this is, uh, Dr. Roelmoorland, and Dr. Roelmoorland is former military as well as a former school administrator. Um, he works with, um, school districts by companies, and really focusing on diversity, equity, inclusion, and stability.
I'm saying, that was twelve K, not twelve A. But.
But I still would like to hear what you have to say, I just, I just wanted to.
It's all right.
That's my fault.
Okay, which one did we pull?
Well, she's talking about twelve B, so it's called A.
Sorry, that's my fault.
Okay, so, uh.
It sounded like, maybe we were.
Okay, so, uh.
May I speak to.
I know, I was looking at.
I speak to 12K.
Yeah.
And so, Dr. Roehmland will be working, starting with River Valley High School. The incidents in the recent weeks have been disturbing, very disturbing to me, clearly showing that we needed to educate our youth, our staff, and our parents and community regarding the historical impacts of the actions of our students and understanding, you know, terms that students use with one another. That is not always a term of endearment. And for others, they see it that way and not understanding the impact of use of certain types of vernacular. But I see this as a bigger issue than just River Valley. We will start with River Valley. But I do see this as a training, an initiative within our district that needs to be moved to all of our schools in terms of the use of social media, these viral videos and TikToks and the implications where students think that is, you know, it's humorous and not understanding that some of them are very fearful to others in our community. I've had conversations with the Jhaka movement regarding our Indian community as well, regarding their calling, asking them to work with us, regarding educating our, our staff and our students regarding that, their culture and their religion. And also, I'm calling upon C.R. Health to talk with an individual who worked with males, particular males of color, and really understanding. So what I wanted to say is, Dr. Roehmland, is we've had long conversations and again, he did see the video. He does understand what I am requesting and understanding that this is a conversation that goes beyond just that video. The video to me was symptomatic for the bigger issue that our students need to be educated upon. And really, it is about diversity and equity in our district. And I'm calling upon our community leaders to help with this as well because it's not just a U of City unified issue. It could have happened at any school. It happened at River Valley. And it could have happened throughout our district. And so really, it's an education, we'll start with River Valley. But this is a, and it's not a fix. This is going to be an ongoing conversation and education and conversations with our, again, our students, our staff, and our parents, and our community. So I just wanted to call that out regarding the work that we will start and continue to do over the next year.
Do you, can I ask, are you getting favorable responses from city and county people?
I haven't heard from any, but I'm reaching out to the community leaders. Because I think it's important. That's why I happened to be on a call with the Jhaka movement and working with the county office. But also, he's part of the leadership there and also the director from the Jhaka movement. He's a board member in Fresno regarding their work with us and being part of the work that we'll be doing. So I'm going to be, I am reaching out and I, and as I shared with our parents, I met with our parents at River Valley. This is not, like I said, it could have happened in this school. It happened at River Valley. It's unfortunate, it's a time to educate. But this is, I don't see this as just a U of City unified issue. I think it is a, and it really is going to be a tiresome conversation.
Shelley brings up a good point. There have been no comments, the city council reports, and yet those are the leaders in this community and I would expect as much. It, I mean, Cleveland has had swats because Sutter has had things painted on the road going out there. I won't repeat them because it's offensive. But these things are happening, but we got all the attention, obviously, because, I mean, I told you, Shelley, made it all the way to my friends in Europe. And so, you know, it, it, it's upsetting that all the leaders of the community are not being, using their voice in this. Maybe it's because it's election time, I don't know. I'll just put that out there. But it is, it is a problem and it can only get worse unless we do something about it. I tell parents all the time, if you won't educate your student, your child, the streets will. So it's a problem. So we still need to go back because we approved B through K and I have a motion to approve 12A.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
On 12A, actually. Thank you for pulling it. Do you, there's, I'm this county employee and there's a county item on there even though it doesn't impact me. It's a shitty thing. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of approving 12A?
Aye.
Opposed? Member Tackard is not present. We'll move on to student cases as discussed in closed session.
I mean, which one we, we've discussed.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the case as discussed in closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Member Tackard is absent. Purchase of furniture for IT offices.
So this is, as we spoke about many times, moving to many of our places in the district office on Main Street. This is to get furniture for this district office, repurposing it for the IT and the personnel that will be here.
Make a motion that we approve unless you have any other comments?
I don't know why she looks at you.
Because I'm, I heard her take that breath.
Scott, can you just tell me about the warranty on these items? When we go over and purchase.
I don't, I can't, to be honest with you. I don't know the specifics on the warranty, but I could follow up with that information.
They don't carry their own specific warranties. Usually, they carry their own specific warranties.
I, I, I guess I was just curious to see like what that term would be.
Yeah, I can follow up with that information.
I just.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions on 12B? Do we want to approve, to staff report, what?
13.
13B? This, okay.
I need to know how to approve that.
Oh, okay.
Motion and a second on 13B, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Tackard is not, yeah. Purchase of tables for shade structure Phase One project.
So in our continued improvements at the school sites, we've done, you know, we've been working through the shade structures and playground upgrades. And this is furniture for this place structure. So they could even have, you know, activities out there as well. So this is just another addition to what we're doing using the COVID platform.
Make a motion. I have a motion, sorry. I have a question.
I don't know about the warranty.
No, that's actually a good question. My question is, the furniture, I mean, excuse me, the tables and things that are existing, right? Could you tell us what we're going to do with them?
Well, there's, I mean, there aren't tables in these areas right now, so this is new additions.
So correct me if I'm wrong, the shade structures are not playground structures? Thank you.
Can I make a motion on 13C?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, member Tackard is not present. We'll move on to item 14, board reports and information. Do we have any committee reports?
We don't need some later this week, correct?
We got to check on the agenda. So we'll do a different talk about, about paper trails and security. Robert, oh, John, I'm going to listen to this.
Robert Kirkman.
Yeah, Robert Kirkman, he's been with us for about six months. He's working on using tickets, getting teachers and staff to really track their needs for IT. If you take it, so they can better budget for having staff out on campus and where they are, what they're doing. So versus that, just, hey, while you're here, can you fix this? While you're here, can you fix that? So they want to have ticketing to retrack it. We're also talking about doing, yeah, two-step authentication, how you implement that. And it also talks about securing our door, like electric keypads and different sorts. And that also costs, it sounds like a million plus dollars to secure, to keep all rooms manager. So they have different milestones for year one, year two, year three, four, et cetera. Also, getting more smart screens, smart screen technology in classrooms. Sar was here really, Robert and Sar really had a great conversation. Scott and I listened. My words.
Yes, do you mind if I expand a little bit?
I was going to call you and make you do the whole thing, but you still don't want to do that.
Yeah, I think it was a good, good meeting as Robert gets kind of, you know, familiar with the staff and what we're doing here. So he kind of developed a multi-year plan, you know, on some of the milestones that we're going to hit. Cybersecurity is a big vulnerability for this school district and that's what Greg was referring to regarding our backup best practices and multi backdrop authentication. So that was a lot of discussion and Sar and Robert really did get the details on that. And then classroom technology, we talked a little bit about that as far as, we're going through the facilities master planning and Ed specs and, you know, kind of what happens in a classroom is a big part of the Ed specs that feeds into our facilities master planning. So, you know, that is kind of, that will evolve as we go through that process and work itself into the facilities master planning. And then we do a couple of other things, you know, with classroom technology is also kind of our, working on our Chromebook one-to-one policy and what that looks like, you know. So we didn't have, really, you know, at this meeting, it was putting it on the agenda. It's just something that's very important that we want to work on and we'd like this implemented next year. So, so that's something that we have to work through this year so we can put it into practice hopefully. One last thing is that we had some issues with our search information system this year and we'll be transitioning that to cloud-based system that will be more stable, more secure. And so, you know, that'll be a product as well that we're looking towards. About it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
The sales meeting's on Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. Item 15, written communications from the public, do we have any? Comments from employee representatives?
Mercedes.
Okay.
Good evening, the board, staff, and community and everybody's out there on this. I'm Sandy Strahlin and I represent our classified employees with celebrities all over the city. I'm kind of all over the place taking notes here. Justin, Mr. Cutts', presentation was quite interesting. And, you know, security is on all of our minds all the time, especially when you work at a high school when your kids are, you know, it's much bigger than you are in that room. So, but we lock the doors, but not all of our people that work in those classrooms have keys to that door. So you're always telling them if you leave that classroom, knock. So, you know, I appreciate doors being locked, but I think that as a staff member, I should have a key to every door that the classroom I work in. Not just me, but that's patently in class, in staff members in those classes, right? We talk a lot about campus security. We employ campus supervisors and I, in my past lives, I knew that there is a very big difference between like, say, loss prevention and security guards, right? So I don't know if there's a difference between security guards and campus supervisors, but we employ campus supervisors and we should keep the narrative to that if there is truly a difference in this. Those two terms are not interchangeable, which I do not believe that they are. CPI, I, we do all need CPI. I have been trained in CPI in the past. I've had previous type, you know, the whatever the banner of the year was, other trainings, both de-escalation and hands-on. The hands-on piece does not work if only two people in the school are trained. You have to have multiple people because if you and I are the ones trained and one of us isn't here, then it's not going to be effective. And that's why it's important to get that training, even you might never use it, but to have that training on the containment and that sort of thing, which is a physical piece, is important. And having that de-escalation regularly out there for us is extremely important. I don't believe that our classified staff sees that level of training on a regular basis. I, in our SDC classes, I think they get some CPI. We had CPI, the de-escalation part last year during some minimum days for those who could attend, but not really a lot. Your SB 390 training during, in February, I assume that's during February break, which means you're going to ask our classified employees to give up their time off with their families to come in and get trained. And we haven't even told them yet, so they can't even pre-plan for that. So that is kind of a problem, right? I mean, we need to, we need to figure out how to train people while, during, within their work hours, within their work calendar, or extend that calendar in order to accommodate that.
And has it been scheduled?
I don't know if it has been scheduled. The one in August was scheduled before school started, so it was on their, on, not their own time in the back that they weren't being paid, but it was definitely during their time. But, yeah, but if you take, he didn't say. So I don't know and I'm not, I don't want to make that assumption, but I'm just saying that if it is during break, you are asking classified employees that need a break, just like everybody else that's out there in the fields to, or, in the field, who's on the ground, to give up their time with their family.
Mr. Reed, do you understand what she's saying? I mean, it sounds like it's already been scheduled from what she's saying.
I do. Part of the challenge is we, the train that we looked at is that it's in person and it requires a trainer to come along. And if, and setting up that training would then require us to pull all of the staff at the same time. So we would leave our schools without our campus supervisors during the school.
And we can understand that, but asking people to come in on their unscheduled calendar time is also a voluntary thing and you cannot require them to come in. Even though you're paying them, you cannot require them to come in on their non-scheduled calendar. So for the most part, most people will come in, but there's, you know, some people that maybe don't want to come in during that time. So we just need to be aware of that. And, you know, we deal with difficult students every day. Our, gosh knows, our certificate and staff deals with it on a ongoing basis. The classified staff from, you know, parents in the classroom to our, our bus drivers here. And, you know, we see our, our bus staff, our transportation staff here regularly now. I gave glasses, certain sweaters are quite bright. But we all need this training. But we also need to recognize that, just like we're expecting our students to reset, we need to reset. Every day we walk in that classroom, we get on the bus, we, you know, are with the students out on the fields or in the, on campus supervisors, the ER duties, that's our turn to reset. Back to, okay, everything's fine, let's give that child another opportunity. And I think sometimes, and I would venture to say everybody is guilty of this, that we forget, we forget to reset and we bring that baggage with us from yesterday. And we don't really want to forget that baggage because sometimes that's perfect, but it is important for us to do that reset if we're expecting our students to reset. And again, I'm quick training. I'm going to bring up Lincoln School. We have the, I think it's referred to as the gauntlet, how you get onto Lincoln School if you are non-employed and you have to go through this gated area and this maze to get to the office. And that was put up, I believe, as a temporary until they moved the office so that it was more supportive and then have to walk through the gauntlet. And if you're on this side of the gauntlet in your classroom, you have to go all the way around this time period. So I think that we really need to look at that and look at and improve the way visitors come on campus at Lincoln School because it causes problems with employees everywhere. Lastly, my favorite topic ever is the parent conference is coming, hosted by CSCA. It will be in Ontario this year. It is April 4th through the 6th. Registration will be coming out soon. It's not out yet. We don't have a list of classes, but this is a, this is a conference that is great for not only our educators, but our campus supervisors, our transportation staff. Obviously, not everyone can go to it because we are, you know, moved staff. But making that commitment, I know we have S R funds and that sort of thing, making that commitment, send more than just four special parents would be ideal.
Good evening, and, Kelly, this is President of the.
Good evening, and feel like this president of the teacher's association. I'd like to address a few items with you tonight. First of all, I'd like to appreciate board president Riley's acknowledgement of the importance of teachers and staff and that they will be supported in the event, that they make a professional judgment call to intervene in a situation that their own safety or the safety of students. That's critical for us to feel supported. Part of feeling safe in your workplace is not only feeling physically safe, but in line, somebody's got your back. So thank you for acknowledging the importance of our employer having our back when you have to make difficult decisions. I'm gonna keep repeating this. We need clear and consistent safety protocols that establish the boundaries for our students. We need clear parameters for de-escalation in the face of heinous profanity and dangerous physical aggression. I fear that the joy and satisfaction facilitating learning on our classrooms is being overshadowed by the challenges of our current conditions. There was a time when the joys of our work might have offset the substandard wages of public school educators compared to other professionals with similar educational backgrounds and training. It's no longer the case. We're asked to do more and more to address the significant needs of our students. The demands of the job, coupled with the rising cost of living, require that we be paid a wage reflected of our advanced education, our professional skills, and our ever-increasing job duties. With a 13.2% ongoing increase in funding, UBSID Unified can afford to consider pay increase for YCTA members. If YCUSD is going to attract and retain quality educators to work with our students, they must, you must substantially increase our salaries. And we're worth it. Your students and our community are worth it. Hopefully, the data shows that the public continues to trust and respect the public school educators and places their confidence in us and when they send their students to school. Data from the PD 8K annual survey showed this. Unfortunately, what it also showed was that down from an average of 60% over the past 50 years, currently, only 37% of those surveyed would recommend their child going to public education as public school teacher. I've done this job for 30-plus years and I have loved teaching and working in UBSID Unified. For the first time, I would no longer recommend this profession to my children. That saddens me greatly as I think we do an amazing service. We need to do better. The vacancies at UBSID Unified are significant. That survey further indicated that in a long, 55% of educators have indicated that they could be leaving their profession early or retiring early, just in the last two weeks. UBSID Unified has had three resignations from your certificate. Those teachers may not be released, well, teachers, counselor, the CNA instructor. Those teachers may not be released because, we have a obligation to meet from here. It's none less disturbing, but you go to three resignations in the last two weeks. In addition to that, the action you took tonight with regards to your needs to hire people without full credentials, that number represented 56 employees. That represents 8% of your, approximately 8% of your certificate of RDU is not working within their credentialary. That also fails to address, sorry, hold on. That fails to address the number of positions sitting vacant. Say, an SLP, two counselors, a music teacher, the CNA teacher, the PE teacher at YCHS, the art teacher at YCHS. It also fails to address that you have intervention teachers who are not teaching intervention, but instead in a regular classroom. That you have reset rooms formerly known as ISS teachers who are not in their ISS classroom, but instead teaching in a vacant position. 27 teachers are teaching on their prep period. That represents other vacancies that have been left unfilled. We need to address this and the time is now. It has never been more important for us to assure that we are paying educators a salary commensurate with their education, their expertise, and the job we're being asked to do. I urge you to take the action to support your employees. Thank you.
And to employee reps, board members?
I have a couple of comments actually, one, up facilities meeting coming up. I'd just like to advocate for maybe when we're looking at the master plan or for just looking at updating or looking at the needs of school sites. I think that, like, having at least one shower on the elementary campuses would be something that is needed nowadays with the homelessness, the, just the different challenges within the home life. Kids aren't getting their hygiene met sometimes. We wanna take that as being like our responsibility of feeling supported at school. So just wanted to share that for the facilities meeting. The other two things I wanted to talk about. One, I, I work at AK, so I'm gonna give a huge shout out to AK, but also the nutrition department, Chelsea, Satori, they held a farmer's market. I don't know if they did it with all sites, but it was amazing. All those students in the elementary side got to participate. I'm not sure if the middle school did as well. But, you know, they thought of every single thing. We have so many different selections of fruits and veggies. And I had kids that were like, I'm not gonna eat anything. I hate fruits, I hate veggies. But then they got $3 to spend, you know, the nutrition bucks that they got to spend and they thought of like the bag. As a teacher, I was like, well, how am I gonna hold it? I can't hold it for all of them, but then they thought of everything. They had the bags. The kids got to go up, make their selections, they got to pay for it and enjoy it. And every single one of my students and the students that I saw, they just had a really positive experience with it. And I think it's, it was a fantastic experience and I would hope that, you know, there's opportunities to continue that. I'm looking at all different sites and bring them back to AK as frequently as he's going to be getting it. Okay, it was fantastic. The other thing that I wanted to touch base on with the board was, I was driving by, can't remember if it was like Saturday or Sunday, but I saw Sun Suite had a huge jumbo screen and it looked like they were doing a huge staff appreciation because there was kids and there was parents that went over there and I don't know if it was open or closed.
It was just, it was a staff appreciation and they had a.
Like a huge movie scene.
Yeah, and they had movies for the kids and then they had a harvest festival. That's what it was. It was for the staff.
And I walked by, like, oh, I drove by, I didn't walk by, but I drove by and I was just like, that is awesome. To be able to do something like that, I think that in the time that I've worked for YCUSD and in the time that, you know, I've worked with the county in the last like eight years, I don't think there's ever been something where we've done something to support our staff in that kind of capacity. And I think like, kind of the sentiments that I'm hearing, some of the things that I'm seeing, the experience that I'm going through as a teacher on, you know, YCUSD campus, or just a teacher in general, you know, I really wanna advocate to do something more for our staff. And, I mean, obviously, I know the weather is getting a little bit colder and putting something like that together this semester would be kind of unrealistic, but I would hope that this school year, we can do something for our employees. That something like that. It could be something totally different, but just give.
You're for the reason we're trying to.
Well, you know, if it was not.
I hate to be so black and white, but.
I understand that, but you know.
I've been a member for a long time, so.
To be honest with you, like, I, I think that that's something that's needed. And if there's not school funding that can get us there, I mean, I have no problem going through and I raise a lot of money for my campaign and I'm sure that if I was able to go out to the community and see what we can raise for our staff, I think they deserve it. So that's my two cents.
Great.
So as far as safety concerns go, I definitely agree with staff, you know, teachers that I don't like the fact here that you guys don't feel safe at school. It is a concern, might as well. I think it's an evolving situation of respect. It goes back to what I said last time. I need respect. It initially starts at home with the parents, teachers, the kids' respect. I think everyone has a whole term, you know, everyone's whole in general these days. Cell phones have changed the world, technology's changed the world. Music that our kids listen to, adults listen to, video games they play, non-use, there's a, I don't, yeah, I don't blame them with video game, but it, it's, no, the, the video game where they, they emphasize shooting cops, shooting cops, doing drugs and, and being intimate with, with working ladies. But that's, that's a game that they, these kids play, so where are they supposed to respect?
Grand theft auto.
Grand theft auto, but I'm sorry. You know, those, those games aren't appropriate for kids. And so they're being taught continuously not to respect authority. And that's a problem. And unfortunately, it trickles down and it's hitting your teachers. And I, what are we supposed to, what are we all supposed to do? Well, we all have to work together, but initially it starts at home. And parents gotta be involved. They gotta support, they gotta support the board, support school, the district office with cell phones because 20 years ago, cell phones weren't not involved in school. There's emergency, thirty years, they had to call the district office. So, but it's just another form of communication now, it's instinct. And this video stuff has gone viral is because kids got cell phones. And, but it's still, it's a respect thing. I think it's really taught at home. So need parent support as well. It's not just us. Security, I do agree, is an issue. And I think it goes even for our bus drivers because they probably gotta deal with getting cut off every day on a regular basis by younger race car driver that's deciding if you make a left or a right, cut them off if you care less that they just made you sign on your brakes. So we appreciate you guys and we hear your concerns and we appreciate your service. That's it.
Board members, any comments?
I just, I just wanna say that I too am very saddened about what's going on with our schools. I don't, I don't know what to do about it. There's just so much going on out there. And I've watched it escalate through the years and it feels like it's almost hitting a ceiling at this point to where it's just out of control. And we had an instance where it wasn't just the student, you know, but the school was concerned about the student and the parents got upset. And it's like, we hear it from both sides, you know. We, we hear it, parents don't want us getting out of their lives, but yet we're trying to protect these kids. We have kids that, as Greg said, no respect. And then we have kids that are doing the drugs and we have horrible, horrible drugs in our community right now. And I just pray every night that we can just get through another day without a horrible thing. I listen to the, I don't listen, but I look on Facebook at the 911 scanner and sometimes I see this stuff about the same time probably Torine does because once it goes through 911, it comes across that page. So that's how I get some of mine so quickly, but it's just, it's like there's no good answer. We're doing everything we can with security. We hear the teachers, you know, yes, we need the training. Yes, we need the, you know, all of this, but it's come to a point that that's why we're here, that's what we're doing. That's why we have the presentations today because we are seeing such a need in security in the schools. And it's just, it's heartbreaking to me to know that this is going on every day. And we have a, we have, what did you say, 11,000 students? I mean, we're, we're trying to keep track of 11,000 students with our staff. We see the vacancies. It's statewide, it's countrywide. It's not just our school. There's a lot of schools with it. And it just saddens me that everybody's leading the education world and it's just really become hard everywhere and it's not just us. And it is saddening. And I know, I know, this is my last year here. I can only do what I can do until I'm done. But I wish you all the best of luck because it's just crazy out there. As Greg said, it starts at home, but some of our kids don't have the best homes, so what do we do there? You know, we can only do so much in those homes and we have more homeless, we have more need. And it's just a crazy world today with adults and children and it's just driving me crazy.
And the other thing too, I also, but I also believe there's more good than there's bad.
There is, there is good out there.
So we gotta, we also gotta focus on the positive versus the negative. You can't let a few bad apples ruin everyone.
Well, we've got a lot of information tonight. School security is certainly one of the things that we're all concerned about. But the other thing is, the kids that are causing problems at our schools are called from the homeless community. Yeah. They're from all walks alike. And, and sometimes because we have a fixed image of, of what that's about, then, then we tend to look at that. I will say that the meeting that was held in Sacramento was interesting, to say the least. I will say this, if the NAACP would get the message correct, then we would probably have a better start on this. You know, sometimes kids will tell you one thing and the story that the parents get is different. And you have to question which is accurate. So it's gonna, you know, what's happened in UBSID is got to be a team effort. It can't be, let me wait until my group is targeted because I'll say this and, and. It only started with Jewish people. We tend to forget that. It only started there. And then before, it took on a new meaning. And we have, we can't have the attitude, I'll wait until it's my group. It is your group. And, and I, the teachers have, and the CSEA, you all have a tremendous job because sometimes parents send their kids to school, say, you have to do what that teacher tells you. You know, who's a bus driver to be talking to my kid like that? They get on the defensive because I think they sometimes question, have I done my job? And so when they're taught to come to school and disregard authority, then that's what you get. So, and Greg's right, we applaud all your efforts. I don't think the public knows how far it goes. They forget that especially bus drivers are responsible for getting their kids to and from school. And yet you face road rage and all sorts of other things, you know. Interesting. So are, is, are there any other comments, superintendent?
No, I just do wanna clarify and then there's been, it's been a long meeting. So I do wanna say that the master facility planning process that started and will continue are going to address some of the things that, for example, that Mercedes talked about the front of Lincoln School. So we're addressing these things. You may not see the changes tomorrow because the plan will look at the entire facility in terms of what needs to be done. And then the board will be faced with working on what, what to prioritize in the master facility plan. So I want you to be aware that we are aware of the facility, we need, we understand in terms of our horrible and things like that. So that will be the process that will go over the next six to nine months.
Six to twelve months.
Six to twelve months, okay, I know. But I did want to acknowledge that we are aware of those in, I can't believe we can't, I, I'm clearly aware of that. So just wanna bring that up. And again, we will get back to some of the review to some of the information if you have any questions. To all of you that asked questions, any other comments?
I invite the public that are still out there listening, that if they have questions as to what UBSID Unified is doing about the River Valley incident or any other incident, please contact the superintendent before you put information all over the internet that may or may not be accurate. I invite Betty from the NAACP to meet with our superintendent or any board member if they truly want the facts. The next board meeting is November 8th. Open session begins at 7:00 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So will you.
All those in favor, aye aye. Thank you.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakelselfstorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in-person and personalized. Instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings.